This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, very good. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 18th, 2025 at 6 o'clock. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anybody here for citizen speak? Are we on agenda items? Okay, I don't see anyone, so let us continue on. We have everyone here except Stephen tonight, but I assume he's coming, so we'll proceed with the agenda as it is. We have one appointment before us for the Alminers. Cindy, would you like to take that one?
I...
Or do you have...
I will. I cannot, because I don't...I didn't get informed about that.
Oh, okay.
They've taken my resignation quite seriously.
Oh, they took it seriously, okay.
Jumped ahead.
Very good, all right. No problem. So we have an appointment for Christine Leprad to be on the Alminers until the town election on May 20th. So this is a very short appointment, I gather, for the interim time until the May 20th town election. And Christine is a retired person who's worked in federal lending agencies around, apparently. And she's been, I guess, she used to work for USDA and Farm Service Agency and Farmers Home Administration and the Ag Stabilization and Conservation Service. So she's been pretty much a loan technician person. So she's put her application forward, and we have a note, I think, from the Chair of the Alminers, who says, yes, definitely, please put her on the agenda for appointments. So with that, I will take a motion to approve the appointment of Christine Leprad to the Alminers until May 20th, 2025.
I move to do the same, to accept the application for Christine Leprad until May 2025 for the position on the Alminers.
Second?
Second by John, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Motion passes. Thank you. No other appointments? Why don't we go ahead into the Town Administrator and Select Board reports, and then we'll get into new business. So Scott, do you want to go through a couple things?
So the H&amp;P, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee, held its more than likely last meeting about a week and a half ago. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is going to be putting together the final report, and we're going to be presenting it to the Select Board and having one final public hearing for everything. Special Town Meeting is going to be held on March 22nd at 10 o'clock at Norris School. The warrant, motions, and summaries are posted to the town's website. I've started meeting with individual departments about possible reductions for hopefully next week, so we can get back on schedule for the budgeting process. Tanya Bond is asked to start the first meeting of the Stormwater Utility. We're looking to schedule it in early April. As soon as Special Town Meeting is concluded, we're going to move on that. Today, we found out that the remote hybrid extension was approved.
Oh.
So, thanks Lucy.
Okay. So that means remote and hybrid meetings for town meetings?
Yes, any boards, committees, select boards. I'm not sure how long it was extended for. They didn't do it permanently, right Lucy?
I think it went to June of '27. It was supposed to expire soon, like this month.
This was expiring in...sorry, this month.
Yeah.
Or May. I have to agree to May, but it's extended to 2027.
And it actually got approved? I knew they were talking...
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
If we get some proof, it's going to go.
Oh, so it still needs to be approved?
Yeah.
At the legislature level. So that's...the probability is pretty great, though. They keep extending these things, so I don't know why they don't decide to just make it permanent, but okay.
When does it expire? Is there some window we might have an issue of time?
March 31st, it officially expires.
Okay.
But hopefully it will all set by then.
Okay, good, thanks.
I'm pretty sure that...
Right, so that means those committees that have been either hybrid or meeting remotely, theoretically, can still do that until we hear otherwise, as far as we know. I mean, it looks like it's on track to be approved, from what we know. Okay, and last?
And I just wanted to point out that this year, we're getting a little bit additional Chapter 98, from 321,000 to 551,000. So it's a good adjustment for this year.
But that's, again, if the budget gets approved. So it's...you know, somebody's still got to approve the governor's budget as put forward, right? All right. Okay, any questions, any thoughts? Hi Stephen. Any questions of Scott? All right. If not, how about a couple of Select Board reports? Cindy, you got something down there?
The Board of Health, there has been a notice that the Chair of the Board of...I mean, excuse me, the Health Director is considering resignation at the end of April. And that is news. I know there'll be a transition time, and so that's one thing about the Board of Health. The Open Space Committee, there really hasn't any update since the last time we met or that I gave a report. And the Board of Assessors met today, and it's essentially business as usual, moving along on a number of projects we're doing. And one thing to note is that we are researching bylaws, either in this town or in another town, to use for the Board of Health. We've never had a bylaw for the Board of Health. So we're trying to determine one and get some input from perhaps our Town Administrator and others, and the Bylaw Committee, in order to put that on the annual town meeting in May. Is that possible?
Yeah, it depends how hard it is to write.
One of our board members, who's Linda Green, who, by the way, has accepted the Chair in that I'm needing to resign, that was voted today. Linda Green will be the Chair of the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
And finally, we do need to say out loud that the office is in desperate need of deep cleaning. And I know I've mentioned it before, there is dirt, and frankly, other stuff on the floor that's been there for the whole time I've been attending there. So I really feel that needs to be said publicly. We need to come up with a plan for cleaning that office, especially the floor.
All right. Dan?
So Conservation Commission, there's still no Chair, the committee. We mentioned the Zoom meetings can continue, so that'll be good for the CONCOM. And we had a reading, a review of the bylaw around naming, so we're ready for that one. And Philip Planning Board, we're meeting coming up on Wednesday, and we had a reading, review of the accessory dwelling units bylaw change, so.
Okay. And is CONCOM doing a rotating chair, or what are they doing?
Yeah, so for now, we've been doing a rotating chair.
So it doesn't stop them from meeting right now, at least?
Doesn't stop them from meeting, but it's more, I guess, difficult.
Okay. All right, Stephen, anything?
Dan, Housing Authority, not up to date.
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned Housing Authority. They just haven't had a meeting, so we did have that...we had that town event where we gathered information on Zero College Highway. I think that's something to mention around Housing Authority.
But there hasn't been a separate meeting of Housing Authority?
No.
Okay, all right.
I have nothing more.
John?
Finance Committee, you guys have been meeting with Finance all along, so I don't have to repeat anything there. And PPPQ, or P...
Easy for you.
...is meeting Thursday night, so we'll have some more information after that. But I think the big thing is the schools. And so I put together something just to kind of rattle off here, the latest update. We met...Hampshire Regional met last Monday to vote on the budget. The budget passed, but there was an inquiry made afterwards that went to legal counsel that changed the impact of the vote. Now, the budget dollars remain the same, but it was...had to do with an allocation. So some money that was being allocated through Hampshire Regional down to the communities, the attorney said belongs in central office, and we pay a different portion at central offices than we do what falls through Hampshire Regional. And I'll get to those numbers in a second. But then, fast forward to Wednesday of that week, the school board met, Norris met, in hopes of settling the budget there so we could have our public meeting tomorrow night and finalize the budget. But we ended up having to cancel tomorrow night's meeting because the initial...because of the initial ask, and more work that needs to be done. But the highlight is, or the running situation regarding both schools, is that Hampshire Regional budget, the current budget for fiscal year '25 was approved at 5.7 million. The '26 that was approved on Monday night, after adjusting for the allocations, was 5,961,676, a 4.1% increase. We had a 4% placeholder of 5.95, so we have $5,100 that we need to make up at the high school level. Norris fiscal year '25 was approved at 5.6 million. The fiscal year '26 request that came in is 6.6 million. It's an 18.29% increase. The only additional things that are in there outside of contractual increases is one STEM teacher at 72,000, and additional $5,000 for tuition. So there's an internal accounting error that I think is going to come to light at Friday's meeting in this room with the school committee, and any Select Board members or Finance Committee members that can arrive would be...or participate are more than welcome, because we need to have our public vote Tuesday night to close out the budget. And at this point, it's the 6.6 number that is going to be voted on. Vocation tuition, fiscal year '25 is 1.1 million. For this illustration, I assume that stayed flat, that we're going to maintain the same number of children. It may go down, it may go up, but as a placeholder for when I get to the bottom line. Local transportation, it was $399,000. The contract was approved in February. We're waiting on the final documents, but it is going to be a 3.5% increase for this year, and fiscal year '27 is a 3% increase. In fiscal year '27, they want to go back and look at the cost allocation of that contract, and what towns pay for what, because it's been about two decades since they've done it. So either affirm that it's still being done the right way or not, but that's a fiscal year '27 situation. So that puts...what we need is 413,000 there. Vocational transportation, it's the same contract. We...this year was 66, so we need 68,000 to get to 3.5%. So assuming that vocation stays flat, which I don't believe it's going to, we need a total of 8.2 million for the Select Board line items in the Norris School, and we have a placeholder of 7.3 for a shortfall of $901,000 at the local level. You factor in the 5,100 from Hampshire Regional, and as of our last meeting, the $198,000 shortfall on the town side, there's a shortfall of 1.1 million. And a lot of meetings to happen in the next 48 hours.
Yeah, a lot of meetings between now and next Tuesday. So let us assume that we will need to have a budget meeting with FINCOM on Tuesday next, which we weren't sure that we were going to need to, but we definitely do, I think, and especially after these school committee meetings. The shortfall on the town side, we knew that's where we were. As we ended up, we were $198,000 short, but then that was before...that's because we budgeted pretty much everything people asked for, and that still put it back on...Scott, go back and meet with the various departments and figure out some of the cuts, which I know has started to happen, and before Tuesday, we'll have those. But we're trying not to inflict too much pain on departments that really definitely need staffing. So we'll see what we can do. We've got our work cut out for us in the next week, for sure. From my end, on committees, Bylaw Committee meets tomorrow. We're focusing on a bylaw on scenic roads. We're trying to develop that. And the Grant Committee, honestly, we're floundering a bit. There's been nothing good in terms of advice coming our way for either the MVP Action Grant, in terms of the kind of things that we're trying to put in to qualify for, which was basically a heating cooling center feasibility study. And then the One Stop Expression of Interest is the first thing that's due up on, I believe it's next Tuesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday. That's the first one that's due up, and that's a very short application. And all we were going to do was put in the notion for the Public Safety Complex, like we had done before, but I'm just concerned that it doesn't seem to really fit their criteria that well. So I'm not sure that either of those are really going to be worth our effort, quite honestly. It's very discouraging. There isn't a good category for the kinds of things that Southampton needs right now in terms of infrastructure. So we will keep at it. We're meeting on Friday, and we'll see if we have any better information by then.
Friday?
Yeah. So that's it. So we have some new business, if nothing else. And since Lucy's here, we'll take...if nobody objects, we'll move up the signing of the warrant for the Annual Caucus. You want to come up and just tell us what we got here, Lucy?
This is the...
It should be green at the bottom, is it? The light?
No.
Nope. On the...is there a little button?
Well, I think you're going to need it. Do I need it?
Well, for the TV part, you do.
So the Annual Caucus is April 1st. Nomination papers are being taken out, being returned. Everybody knows that at the caucus, you can be nominated on the floor for all these positions that we have open: Select Board, Finance, School Committee, Assessor, Cemetery, Alminers. It's from 7 to 9. It's a very simple process, and hopefully we'll get to fill these seats. So you're just going to sign the warrant so we can post it in our five places, so people will know all about it.
And just to say, on the homepage of the town website now, you can go under News and Events at the very bottom and click that, and it'll get you a list of all the open elected positions that I've...
Correct.
When I did a head count, I'm thinking there was like 28?
Yes, there are a lot of seats open.
Positions to be elected.
Yes, there are a lot of seats open. There has been a lot of vacancies
Right.
...in the past couple of years.
So I know...
So we need to fill those.
Right. And I know, for example, Library Trustees has five or six openings, but many of them, I think, are pulling papers, and they're good.
Yes.
But it's some of these others, so I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's one for Hampshire Regional, maybe one or two for Norris, am I right?
None for Norris.
Nobody for Norris?
None for Norris. It's mostly Hampshire.
Okay.
I think there's three. I'll have to look at that.
Okay.
Finance Committee has had two open seats for years
Right.
...that have been vacant. Housing Authority, still need the state appointed.
Yeah, still need one there, too.
Yeah.
So there's definitely, you know, positions available. So please, people, you know, it's hard when you've got some of the same people doing multiple jobs and wearing multiple hats. We really need some new ideas and people to step up. And, you know, it's...for a couple years, it's not necessarily a big ask, depending on the committee. Some committees meet once a month, some others are more frequent. But do think about it. It's really important to have other voices from town involved in our managing of the town's affairs.
And just to clarify, can people be nominated if they're not present at the caucus?
Yes, they can be nominated without being present at the caucus.
But then you...
They will have to...I will send them a note saying...a letter saying, or I will call them, saying that they have been nominated. They have 72 hours to say yes or no that they want to go on the ballot, and we'll get them on the ballot.
Right. And to make that a very useful process and not waste time, it's helpful. If somebody wants to nominate somebody from the floor who may not be there, please check with them ahead of time that they're really even interested in being nominated. Otherwise, it's a waste of a lot of people's time.
It really is.
So please, you know, try to be serious about it. But do come to the caucus on April 1st at 7 o'clock, is that right?
Yeah, we need 25 people to be here to have...to have the caucus, so.
All right, so let us pass that around and sign it whilst Lucy's here.
Thank you.
And let you be anyway. Thank you, Lucy, for that. Okay, Scott, you want to pick up the first issue here on the Council on Edging Retro Wages for the Van Drivers?
So when we did the Personnel Change Form about a month ago, unfortunately, the van drivers were omitted. When I did the PCF, I took out all the elected officials, the contractual employees, and all the Enterprise Fund employees, and the van drivers, who we pay initially from the General Fund, but then get reimbursed by FRTA, was taken from that list as well. So this would just insert the two van drivers at 18.62 an hour from the original Personnel Change Form.
All right. Could we have a motion, then, to add the two van drivers onto the Personnel Change Form? All right.
Second.
Second, okay. John and Stephen?
Question.
Yeah.
This is just a pass-through, correct? Because it's actually paid by the FRTA.
Correct.
It doesn't impact General Fund dollars.
Yeah, it's pass-through, but we just wanted to note it here for that. Do you need...so in my package, I have a photocopy of the Personnel Change...it's not the real PCF. Do you...something we need to sign on that, or?
If it's approved, I'll make the final PCF again.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Consider that approved, then. We're adding the two van drivers onto the list, but we know that they are actually paid through the Fritto grant. Okay. Revenue and expense reports. Can we...anybody have any comments and thoughts about revenue and expenses here that you've seen offhand? I'm going to pull them up. You've got my email offhand. I hope people are having a minute to take a look at them. The...I guess what I wanted to be sure of, is the revenue still through December 31st? Or has it gotten better than that yet?
I believe so. I'll double-check with Bradley, but I think we're still waiting for January for a few things, but we don't want to...
The March 6th email from Bradley says it's as of December 31st.
It is, okay, okay, missed that.
I think we're working on January.
So we're still behind on that one. The expense reports, though, I think are up to date, if I'm not mistaken, through March 6th, thereabouts. So, pretty close. Is there anything that anybody noticed offhand that seems to be oddball? Again, we're approaching, well, almost a three-quarter time, so you would be seeing somewhere in the 60% range in terms of what's spent, probably 60 to 70%, if everybody's kind of on target. I don't know if there's any that jumped out at anybody offhand that just we want to question any expenses on that, but so far, not catching too much right now. So I'm hoping that, you know, Bradley will let us know if there's somebody that's really in danger of going over their budget, or their department heads themselves will obviously be more in tune with that and check on that. Anything from anybody offhand?
No.
No? All right. So do keep an eye on that from time to time. Those are important to keep looking at. The other thing we have, I believe Bradley sent around, or Judy sent around, the latest ARPA report, which would be expenses basically through early March as well. I think we'll be at a time next...in the next couple of weeks, the quarterly ARPA reports are due again, and we'll do a cross-check with those ARPA reports and the balances on Bradley's spreadsheet to see if there are monies remaining, where they're remaining, and which projects. A lot of the projects have finished, but we still have half a dozen or so on board that we maybe will end up spending all of it. We don't know that there's going to be that much excess money. There is some of that money that came back for the grant under the project that Randall is working on with the Culvert Study. So that money had to be put up front, which we did, and then get reimbursed as the work has been completed with the study. And we've already received $58,000 back on that. And another bill went to the state today, I believe, for the remaining 25, 26,000. So we will get back that 84,000 that was technically the town's contribution toward this, that we were able to be reimbursed. Right now, I believe we're not sure if that can be spent again. It's one of those weird ones, because it's one of those reimbursable things that I don't know if ARPA ever anticipated at some point in time. We haven't gotten any instructions, to my knowledge, from anybody managing ARPA.
But if the refund was posted against the project, it would be a surplus line item that would fall to the bottom line and be certified free cash. If you posted directly back to ARPA, then I would say it's ARPA money put.
Yeah.
We appropriated that, we happened to get a rebate at the end of the project. It comes back to that project, falls out to the bottom line.
So I guess I don't know where the 58's been posted, so that's a question, maybe. I don't know that it went back into the ARPA money, but I mean, I think that's a danger. I agree with you if it did.
Right.
Because technically, we've still got until December 26 to spend everything we've already obligated, but this little reflow thing, we weren't really anticipating.
That might be a question for the Bureau of Accounts
Yeah.
...to clarify.
How to handle that.
If we do it this way, do you agree with us?
Yeah, exactly. We're planning on doing it this way, or the auditor, or somebody, to give us that clue. I think you'd been talking about it to the auditors already, right?
I agree with the auditor already.
Yeah, but they hadn't given us any real clarity on that. So that's what's happening on that process. The other thing, I think I had passed around, if I can find it, just a minute. Oh, boy, I've got to find the right email. We do need to do the performance appraisal, Scott's performance appraisal. And I had sent an email around, of course, if I can find it, yeah. So you would have gotten an email from me with the various paperwork, March 10th. So if you didn't get it, let me know. But what that has is the standard form for the self-evaluation for a manager, so something Scott would have to fill out himself. Then we do our performance appraisal as well, and that is usually on a scoring of 1 to 5, I believe. In the past, I will say, we have allowed half points. I wouldn't go any little earlier than that. So a 5 is consistently exceeds expectations, 4 often exceeds, 3 meets expectations, 2 occasionally meets expectations, and 1 rarely meets expectations. So 5 is your top grade for these, and it's in a variety of categories, from job performance, job knowledge, personnel management, fiscal management, time management, communication, teamwork, problem solving, initiative, and above and beyond. Those are the main categories. And so even though Scott will be working on his own self-evaluation first, it wouldn't hurt to just jot down some notes for yourself, so that when you can sit down to fill it out, it'll be a little bit easier to do. I had talked to Scott about trying to do the timeframe for this, and I'm going to see what I did try to think about here. Where did I go to? I forgot. Hold on. Sorry. Well, what I believe I was asking Scott, I'm going to have to find it, Scott, sorry. We had talked about you're getting back on the self-evaluation to me by the 28th of March, I believe it was. I'm trying to pull up that email, which of course I can't. I thought I tagged it. Hold on a minute. Oh, boy. Just a minute. Okay. Wish I could find it, that would be nice. Well, I will send it around.
Monday, 2:06 PM?
Uh, go ahead. Yep, yep.
Self-evaluation sent to me by COB, March 28th.
Okay.
SB member individual vows by April 8th. Results combined and shared April 11th, and present at SB meeting April 15th.
On April 15th, or thereabouts, okay. So until...Scott can work on his evaluation until March 28th. We will have until April 8th? Sorry, April 4th, April 8th?
8th.
April 8th, okay. So that will be our deadline. So you can start working on some of your thoughts on that. Usually, we would want to get a copy of Scott's self-evaluation to help us fill that in, too. So don't finalize it then. But once it's finalized on your end, I will collect them all on April 8th, thereabouts. What I end up doing is averaging the scores and taking a look at some of the key comments, and then I would sit down with Scott and talk about that, just between he and I. And then we will bring back the full evaluation results highlights, at least, to the open Select Board meeting on April 15th. That would be the process, okay? Anybody have any questions about that, or?
I'd love to assist you in this. Should I?
You should, yes, you can.
Give some input on this?
You can, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I was hoping you might still be here to participate with your input on that. You may not be here for the final part, but at least to give me your input, that would be very welcome.
I will be happy to do that.
And I think the one thing that I would like to clarify, too, is that in the current PQB manual, and John maybe knows better than I do, but right now, it seems to appear that Select Board would be the ones also doing some evaluation of Scott's direct reports, which seems to be a little bit odd. It was in the...sort of the overview of the performance appraisal process on the...from the manual, and it was...da-da-da. Let me find this here. Select Board...Select Board will set up a meeting with each department head supervisor to discuss his yearly performance review. And we would do the scoring and whatever. That, to my knowledge, has never been the practice while I've been on Select Board, and we may have in the past delegated that to the Town Administrator. So I would just like to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the Town Administrator, within the next 90 days, to conduct evaluations, as well as direct report these who are Select Board appointments, and that he provide a final evaluation to the Select Board. and that he provide a final evaluation to the select board for a review.
Okay. And I think we need to figure out, well, so what's a good time on this, is a question. In terms of, we've got Scott's right now from February to February. It was what I said, it was his first year, basically. We had tried to figure out the right time for him to do the evaluations. I was thinking more just on a fiscal year for him. So it could be like June, June of last year until June of this year.
Right, so the next 90 days.
Roughly 90 days.
In theory, we would want the information before we authorize the extensions of contracts. Right, so in the next, so no later than June 15th to have it completed.
Well, we can work at that, try that. Because we've got, I think there's eight, eight people, I believe, that report directly to Scott.
That we appoint?
That.
Only the ones that we appoint.
The ones that we appoint.
I'm thinking highway superintendent, police chief, fire chief.
Building commissioner.
That's her, yep.
Dave and Judy, and COA.
But those aren't our appointees. Well, COA might be, but Dave and Judy aren't our appointees.
They're not our appointees, but there's six, at least six out of the eight are our appointees.
Less.
So we'll give it a try. But yeah, this, I think it's just the way this reads right now in the manual. I think it just is a little bit wonky. And certainly, select board has never done the direct reports evaluations in all my time here. So I think we will let that be allocated. So I have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
I don't wanna hear of 90 days or 100 days. You good, Scott?
Should be okay.
Yeah?
He's already got it written.
Well, we'll keep it, keep an eye on it. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll let Scott. And basically, the forms are still the same, Scott, as far as I know, for the most part. They're the same, same forms to use that we would be doing as well. So nothing, nothing different on that. So, and I think, you know, as people, you know, write their score for whatever, you know, element is, then just, it's really just, you know, a few sentences of something to kind of explain your score. You know, something to beef up your rationale as to why you got to that score. That's really all it is. So, but it does take time and a little bit of thought process, absolutely. So thank you for that. But we will get on a track to get these going. Next up, special town meeting preparation. So Scott, I'll turn that over to you.
So we have the, the special town meeting is coming up on Saturday, the 22nd, at 10 o'clock. Let me just bring up my thing here. Maybe if we work backwards to the front to build up to the biggest one.
Maybe make it a little bit bigger so we can read it. I know it's hard for people at home to see any of these screens. It's very unfortunate, even when we were upstairs.
Yeah.
When I looked at the video of our meetings upstairs, you can see us very well, but nobody can see because of the light on the screen. You can't see what we're projecting, and I'm sorry for that. I don't know how we can improve that, but we will think about that in terms of making it also more readable by people at home. But go ahead, Scott.
So the CPA has a request for $15,000 from CPA funds for heat pumps into the, across the street over at the Congregational Church. I'm going to coordinate with them, but they'll be speaking on that. The next one, Article 8, is unpaid accounts from fiscal years. I did get a little bit of, a few sentences for each one from each request. So if there's any questions at town meeting, I can be able to answer it. I expect most of the other, the people there to be anyways. So I'll give an overview of why they were paid late, or the invoices were received late. Legal costs, we're unfortunately racking up the legal costs with all the land transfers and cannabis agreements and a lot of problem properties. So hopefully, I don't have to dip too far into it. I did receive the $10,000 from the income last week, or two weeks ago. And trying not to spend all that, so this would just be a transfer from the funds, the health insurance funds. Then we have.
Couple of bylaws, yeah.
Couple of bylaws. The swimming pool safety bylaw. I imagine the bylaw committee would speak on that.
Yeah, I'll probably end up speaking to the bylaws in general, I would imagine.
And then we also have the, oops.
The naming of structures and.
Yeah, I skipped that.
Buildings and structures and lands.
Naming of structures. We also have Article 4, which would be probably not for this annual town meeting. It's gonna take a little bit, a little bit of time for the Attorney General to approve it. So realistically, it'll probably come for next annual town meeting in '26. But this would change the time from the first Tuesday at 7:00 PM to the first Saturday at 10:00 AM, which would be the first time we had a Saturday town meeting since 2007.
And the idea there would be to attract more, to have more flexibility for more people to attend an annual town meeting?
Can I just ask a question about that? Didn't we have Saturday meetings during COVID period?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the difference.
This will be Saturday, inside.
Yeah.
Oh, these are inside, that's.
Yeah, we had them at Library Field during COVID.
Call that, yeah.
The next one would be Articles 3 and 2, our recommendations from both the state and our legal counsel to adopt, the first one being OPEB declaration of trust, which would allow us to establish a trust fund that we would save up money for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, things like health insurance, you know, along those lines. It'd be treated like our other trusts. Currently, we do have some investments, but they're not in a traditional OPEB trust fund.
And we used to put aside, what is it, 10% of free cash to OPEB every year? But I think this is another one where we are severely underfunded in terms of predicting our needs for the future for retirees, right? This is one of the ones that we are probably not anywhere near where we should be in terms of OPEB funding.
That's somebody else's problem. That's just the issue with the OPEB.
Yeah.
Right, it's always, hey, that's somebody else's, there will be more people working behind me.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we haven't grown the size of Southam government large enough to support all our current retirees.
Right.
I would ask the Treasurer to speak to that one, as well as Article 2, the prudent investor rule. So this would just give the Treasurer some flexibility in the ability, some flexibility to invest in a wider range of stocks. Currently, there's, the state regulates this. So there's only a very finite list of very conservative stocks that the town can invest in. So this would, this would eventually open it up a little bit, but still being prudent, thus named prudent investor. And so it wouldn't be any type of, you know, crazy stocks or anything like that, still.
So on that one there, we went away or opted not to go with the bylaw to establish the investment committee that the Treasurer would work with and not independently?
We still need to do that, I think.
So I was thinking for annual town meeting, and that would be applied to all the trust funds that we have.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, it's still on the list.
I'm okay with the two-step deal.
Yeah, try to take one that's maybe a little bit easier to get understood first, and then work on the bylaw change, yeah.
And then the, last but not least, the public safety building planning bonds, which would be a debt exclusion. This is gonna be a relatively complicated topic to discuss at town meeting. I was gonna ask the town moderator if it's possible. I know that traditionally, there's always been a pro and a con. If we might be able to have the pros as a committee to explain the background first. My suggestion would have been the board chair reading the motion. I would recommend the Public Safety Building Committee Chair, Christina Madsen, maybe talking a little bit about the procedure that we've gotten to this point. And then the police and the fire chiefs, talking about the current state of the facilities. The fact that we just had a leak in our fire department two days ago that destroyed money and checks for the burning permits. And they're all drying out on a table, and that we just got hot water for the first time in five years at the fire department. And then also with the police department as well. So those are probably the two, the two people that know the most about the current situation. And then I could talk about the financial impact. One of the things I put together was Christina and Ian were able to put together this part. And then I put together a tax impact for an average homeowner. And it does have it into the two parts. One thing is, it is an estimate, and it's over 30 years. And we're going on about 4.5% rate. So again, it's a ballpark. We don't know what the rates are gonna be when we actually do borrow for this. It could be 1%, it could be 10%. We really have no idea. But we were able to go to bond counsel and get what their recommendation would be.
So this factors in 4.5% interest?
It factors in 4.5%. Yep, and it's also the average. So one of the other things is the tax payments will be a little bit higher in the beginning, and then as the principal is paid down, so is the interest. So you'll see a declining, so I took an average of what everything would be over the 30-year period.
And for those listing, what does it come out to be? What would it be?
The average home value currently is $433,000. So the first part is the $3.2 million pre-construction costs, which would cover the OPEB, the architectural and the engineering. And this is to get the project to be shuttle-ready.
At the OPM?
OPM, I'm sorry.
Owners Project Manager.
OPM. So the architects recommend taking 10% of the building construction costs for the architect and engineering fees, and then 4.5% for the OPM fees. So that would come out to be a little bit over $3.1 to $3.2 million. We're also gonna have some legal costs and other things built in, so I rounded up for that part. For this part, the tax impact would be a little over $69 per year to fund this part. And it would have to go, if it makes it through town meeting, it would have to be on the ballot in May at the annual town election for approval.
So $69 per household, per year?
Mm-hmm. Later on, the rest of the remaining cost, which would be about $28 million. So part two would be in the fall, and that would be about $24.8 million for the remaining of the building and construction costs. So there are some soft costs built into that, the legal stuff, the permitting, other design things, green energies. And then you have the actual bricks and mortar, which is, you know, the actual construction of the building. So that would be the next phase. It's estimated to cost about $24.8 million. And the average single-family tax bill per impact would be about $554 per year.
And then.
Total, it would be a little bit over $620.
About $600 per year, putting the two together. But the first one that we're asking for right now at the special town meeting is the $3.2 million as a debt exclusion, right?
Right, and on average, it'd be about 16 cents per thousand would be an increase. So if you had a $250,000 house, it would be about a $40 increase. And a $750 house would be $120.
And that's, it says per tax bill. That's the quarterly taxing, taxation, or is that yearly?
Oh, yearly.
Yearly, okay.
Annual bill, yep. And these, neither of these would hit the tax, neither of these would hit our tax bills for a good year, thereabouts?
I would probably say about at least a year and a half. The $3.2 million, if everything gets approved in the fall, then we would go out to borrow for it and get the money, and start with the OPM and the architectural cost. So we wouldn't be borrowing until at least probably in late 2025, early 2026. So then the bigger chunk of it, if that's approved, once we get through all the design, go out to bid and actually get the construction, it'll probably be a year after that.
So I think, just for clarity, because I know we've talked about it between ourselves or at the committee level, with this vote at the town meeting on Saturday, and then hopefully at the ballot box in May, that allows you and Bradley to get the procurement paperwork and things ready. But none of this money, none of the $3.2 million can even be spent until later, when we come back in the fall for the bigger chunk of money.
Right.
So there's no money that's gonna be outlaid, laid out, whichever, right away. So it, but it allows, by voting for it, it allows you to get all the paperwork ready because there would have to be an RFP that goes out on the street to recruit an OPM and to find architects for the project, right? So that gets everything ready to be able to do that. And then only when the second part passes, town meeting and ballot box.
Right.
Then would we be ready to hire somebody?
So if the town approves it in May, we don't get the $3.2 million the next day, and we don't spend it the next day. So it'll be a long time of RFPs, will probably take 60 to 90 days responses. Selecting the OPM is probably another 30 days. And then finally, when they actually bill us, it'll be a few months after that, so. Yeah, so it's, we won't be actually touching the money until late 2025, if everything's approved. And of course, if it's not approved, then we would put contractual language that says, if the town doesn't fund the entire project, then.
Okay, any questions, anybody? So, I don't know, I don't, we're putting Robert on the spot here. Would you, do you wanna, what do you think about Scott's question about having this being presented?
We'll tune it when we sit down tomorrow, the day of.
Okay, fine, so we know how we can approach this. Perfect, all right, that's all.
Are you gonna be meeting Saturday morning?
I don't know that we'll have a meeting Saturday morning. We usually have a brief select board meeting before town meeting, but I don't know that we have, unless.
We're gonna have free cash? No.
No, no. So we won't, we're getting closer to getting everything ready to put in there, but I don't think we'll have it.
Meetings about.
We won't have it by the special town meeting, no? So I don't think we need a meeting on Saturday morning before the special town meeting? I don't feel like we do right now. So let's say no, probably, so we'll be ready for the special town meeting. Yeah, Cindy?
So I have a question regarding what might happen. And some people will ask questions about the senior center and how any of this is going to affect them. And I don't know how that will be handled. Do you have a thought on that? I just wonder if this, what this means.
Robert Floyd, Town Moderator, College Highway. We can only discuss what we're voting on, but I spoke with Scott already that I believe a statement needs to be made confining the thought of the senior center project that will be held in the fall. And so there'll be no discussion Saturday on the senior center, but there will be a statement summarizing of the plan.
Made by whom? Who will make that statement? Scott will make the statement?
I can make the statement, and I just.
Okay.
Okay, so I thought I included it here roughly, didn't.
Yeah, we'll work that out, so yeah.
Because there's so many what-ifs, and we don't knows, and technically, we can only discuss what we're voting on, so.
Right.
That works.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
Sorry. Catch my voice.
Will it be possible to have public information about the senior center available in the hall?
No.
In the hall?
No. We've got handouts only for the public safety building?
I thought in the past, yes, if it has to do with the warrant, you get it, you can get it when you get checked in. But if there were other groups that wanna do stuff, they were able to do on the sidewalk or before they exited into the room.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I heard in the hall. Any pamphlets that are handouts must pertain to the articles we're gonna be voting on. Anything else is outside.
Outside.
Outside the room we're in, yeah.
And not blocking the entryway, yeah.
Outside the hall.
So it could be, you know, over by the library or somewhere, you're right.
Good call, John.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure this doesn't look like a magic trick or something, that the senior center is being considered, but strictly can't be considered in the town meeting. But we haven't forgotten about it, and there's a strategy you can learn about and participate in.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about that? Okay, so we will plan on being there a bit early, before town meeting starts at 10:00. So please plan on getting there a bit ahead of time so we can get settled in.
So you want to say.
We have Hampton Media will be there to record.
You want to say for 9:30, 9:45?
Yeah, 9:45 at the latest, I'd say, yeah. Early as you can. I don't know if we need any help setting up. Will they set up all the chairs and stuff up there at the school?
Yeah, I asked just for the traditional town meeting layout.
And I believe you, Hampton Media, would be on call to come in as well and record, so.
We'll just rotate the reading and the motions?
Um, I think so. There's only nine of them, so we'll probably just go right down the.
However we set. We'll start with you, and then however we set.
Yeah, however we set. Sounds good. Good, good. Okay, and we'll have a separate mic on the select board table so we can be heard as well?
Can we have some kind of mic check? Because while the select board was probably picked out, picked up all right, there was something about the room amplification that I couldn't really hear.
Oh, yeah, for the last meeting, you mean, the last town meeting?
Yeah, I mentioned it to East Hampton Media. But sitting. Yeah. I mentioned it to East Hampton Media, but sitting at the select board table, right in front of speakers, it was awkward. Or maybe we were behind, but they ought to remember how they set it up.
Okay. We can certainly double-check. Usually, I think Jackson tends to do that, but we'll double-check that when we get there.
The audio was okay in the land use planning from two weeks ago, right?
See, we didn't have a table in that location, so...
Yeah, that was different there? Yeah. Okay. Okay, good. If no questions, I think we're as ready as we're going to be for special town meeting. So we'll hope to see people there Saturday morning. Come on in and put your vote down. All right. Next up, we have on the topic here of state earmark requests. Rep. Kelly Pease was by the office just recently and asked Scott if we had something that we wanted he and Senator Velez to plug for us this year. I believe the rep puts in his budget request first to Ways and Means, right? Like within two weeks. So he needs it by April 1st. Senator Velez is a little bit later, but he said, you know, usually when you send it to us, just send us the same thing, and we'll both plug whatever it is you want and send it at the same time.
Can we ask for $20 million for a public safety complex?
You know, here's the good news. He suggested we ask somewhere around $25,000 or $50,000.
Oh, come on.
And it's like, okey-dokey. What do we have for $25,000 or $50,000 that we'd like them to go for? So we definitely, anybody got a thought? I mean, there's, everything we've got is so much bigger in terms of our, you know, even, you know, things like for the heating system over at the highway garage, or everything is big numbers. You know, the 25, 50, you know, we've done our various feasibility issues here and there, but I mean, I don't know.
Can it go towards any kind of personnel situation?
Probably not.
We talked about this land use planner person, but that's not $25,000.
No, because it's not sustainable. No, it's going to be a one-time, it would be a one-time thing. And he said, you know, 25, 25 is probably realistic. 50 I'll try for, but probably not. So it's like, that's not a lot of, a lot of leeway there. So I'm a little bit stumped right now for some ideas. I mean, we had put in money in the past toward a cruiser, which we did get, what did we get?
It was cut in half eventually.
Yeah, we got, but I think we got $20,000 or something for that, maybe, at some point. Yeah, Scott, I mean, Dan.
Not Scott. Why don't you guys ask scores? I mean, not that they can come up with something. They dig up, you know? Ask the kids what they want.
I'm just wondering if there's, is there anything that might be on our capital plan that we've heard about and seen so far that's kind of smaller?
We have, well, we put in for the grant for the IT upgrades for the library. We haven't heard back yet from it, but I don't, I'm afraid if we put it in for that and then we get the grant, then...
Then we're stuck, yeah. No, I'm just thinking of some of these other things that we were thinking, you know, some of the smaller things that we were looking at, you know, moving to, to capital as we talked about various budget things. That would be my only thought, would be to think about some of those.
Well, I mean, if you just want a placeholder, I mean, I would go ahead and ask for 20, I mean, I've got, I mean, ask Kelly, Representative Pease for $25,000 for turnout gear. And then ask the Senator for $50,000 for cruiser, or, I mean...
At least it would be something toward it, if nothing else, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can check, too, with, with the chief. I know he's recently done something with turnout gear, but he...
Well, he re-appropriates that. I mean...
Yeah, whatever.
You could ask for a steel gas tank for the ambulance put back in service.
Yeah, there we go. Because I know it's usually been around $3,000 or $4,000 per turnout gear, so it's been somewhere in that $12,000 to $15,000 that I know the chief has worked with in the past. But, yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly look.
For turnout gear slash first responder equipment.
Yeah, okay. We can take a look. I mean, at least with them, they get, occasionally they've got some possibility of small grants, you know, through the fire safety program. I don't know if there's anything small at all from Highway, for example, that comes to mind. I'm just trying to think of anything else that would be helpful. I don't know. But, yeah, I think that's a challenge when we're not talking big, big amounts of money.
Yeah, maybe Scott's spreadsheet would have a line item that would be close to that much.
I think we can, you know, take a look and just see, but we'll try to come back when we come back on the 25th, okay? We'll come back with a thought about what we'll ask for, because I know Rep. Pease wants it by the 1st of...
What about the preservation of all the handwritten records from 17-something of the cemeteries?
Oh, there we go. Cemetery software.
It's at least 25 grand. Well, you need someone's time to do it.
I thought it was only 6,000, no?
Chris, someone's time to do it.
We might need more of a description about what it would do, what the software would do.
Well, we wouldn't have to cut the trees down to get the paper to write the plans.
So, yeah, I mean, so there may be some things like that. But I think if we take a look and just try to think about some of the things we've heard, you know, maybe there's some, you know, things that would be helpful to have another source of funding for, but it's not any big money, unfortunately, but...
And if you write up the need and it doesn't match with this, well, at least have it ready for the next opportunity.
Exactly. Yeah, no, that's fine. And I think we had asked him, too, about the bond bill, because they did put, it was actually more Senator Velez that put aside the...
Extraction or open space.
No, last year, they, Senator Velez had put $1 million in the economic development bond bill. And that is still there. It's still waiting for the governor's final signature, I think, and then how that really gets released to us is a little bit of a mystery. So that was all, you know, related to public safety building. So it's, it's sort of approved, but not really accessible to us. So it's a mystery. So that's what's going on there. Okay, we will do some thinking about that and come back at our next meeting with some recommendations as to what we can ask for. Thank you for doing that. If you've got a thought, send a note off to Scott, and we'll plug it in. Next thing, just informational, morally, more than anything else, I know people have been somewhat interested in the whole lithium battery storage project in Westfield, and that seems to still be happening out there. I get emails from time to time from a person in Westfield named Dan Ally, I think his name is, who's right now coordinating a, pretty much a campaign for lawn signs saying, you know, no Aquifer, I'm sorry, no lithium batteries on our Aquifer or something like that. I've seen a few around town, so people obviously know where to get them by contacting Dan Ally. I know he's been out on Facebook and provided some information. And then there should be, I've heard of another possible hearing coming up by the Energy Facilities Siting Board, but nothing has been given as a date yet. So there may be another public hearing coming up in Westfield sometime in the coming weeks. And so, once we hear about that, we'll let people know. But, you know, it's really Westfield in the lead on this. This is their, you know, it affects us, obviously, but they're the ones that are really taking the charge on this. They do have a website. If people want to take a look at it, it's called www.wraft, raft, with a wrft.org, and that means Westfield residents advocating for themselves. So anything related to the battery project, I think you can find on their, their website at this point in time. Okay, so that's all I kind of know about that.
The Energy Facility Siting Council is a state agency.
I believe so, yeah.
So while the site is in Westfield and the city is leading the advocacy, we're all kind of at the mercy of a state agency.
Correct, yeah. So, so if there's a date, I'm sure we'll hear about it and we'll let people know in case anybody would like to attend. But best thing is to just be in touch with the folks in Westfield themselves. Okay, next up, land planning update.
So there was a meeting today for the seniors?
There was, actually, yeah.
About land use planning.
Yep. Yeah.
We are, hopefully, I talked to Kyle from PVPC, so we're hopefully, hopefully going to get the internal group probably next week if we can. One of the big issues was we had a request from Dodson and Flinker about potentially delaying the timeline a little bit. Since we don't need it technically for special town meeting or annual town meeting, they would like to see if they can maybe push it back a few months to release it during the summertime. And then it won't impact our ability to apply for one-stop grant. They'll still have enough information that we can go forward with that. It's essentially the, the final product and the things that we're going to need for town meeting and voter approval would be delayed until a couple of months.
Okay. So today, for example, so Kyle from PVPC presented kind of an overview, kind of collapsed a lot of what happened at the three-hour meeting we had at the, at the school, and did a presentation for probably about 15 or so people this afternoon, did a great job in an hour's time, and just kind of collapsed everything and kind of gave the overview and answered questions. And then just, and I'll put a plug in, too, people, if you haven't seen it, there is a survey out there. You need to please get online and fill out that survey. It's only 12 questions. It shouldn't take long. It's really about your vision for how that site can be used, can be developed. And there will be printouts, I believe, already at the, at the senior center if you don't want to go online. I'm sure that we can have some over at the library, too, so that people could fill out a hard copy, and then they would be collected and then, you know, added into the whole totals and so forth. But Kyle did a great job presenting this afternoon and fielded a few questions on that. He was saying that there might be another public meeting sometime in April, that was what I gathered.
That's what we're hoping to do, depending on how.
So I think that's the important thing of people getting your input in via the survey so that they can take some of the information, not only that they gathered the other night at the forum, but then pulling it in from the survey so that we can have another public meeting and say, okay, well, based on everything we've heard so far, you know, here's a first attempt at what it might look like. And that's, that's kind of what I understood today, that it's not anything final by any means. It's just like, okay, here's a first, here's a first thought based on what we've heard about, you know, public safety, senior center, housing, parks, whatever it may be.
And just a warning, so Autumn Olive and Southampton Common are in the lead for names.
Autumn Olive, oh my, you're kidding.
That's an invasive species.
Oh, God, no.
So I encourage everyone, if you don't like those names, I mean, Southampton Common's very common.
Okay. Autumn Olive, guys, is an invasive species, which I personally would not support.
Get on the survey and pick a different name.
Oh, my, I don't know where those came from. Okay, interesting. Well, I...
Is the survey found on the town webpage somewhere?
Yeah, it's under, so go to Special Projects and Land Use Planning.
Yeah. It took me many clicks to get there. So there is a red banner just below the town of Southampton.
Special Projects.
And that's where you find Special Projects without scrolling, scrolling, scrolling.
Yeah, so it's a few less clicks to go that way. And also, while we're on that top banner, there is also a public safety one on that red banner. You click on that public safety one, and it takes you to the Public Safety Building Committee page, and that's where a lot of the background information is on the public safety complex as well. So farther over, there's a public safety one somewhere up top.
Yep.
Yeah, and that will take you to there. So please do try to, you know, use the website, you know, navigate, get friendly with it. It's not, it's not, not that hard to get. We're trying to make it so there's a couple less clicks to get where you need to get to. But hopefully, that will help people. Okay, so you guys will have an internal meeting sometime in the coming week, then, from what I understood. Okay, very good. Thanks. Okay, 250th anniversary, just nothing totally new. Main thing is Friday night, this Friday night, we have our Southampton Trivia Night at the Country Club. So a lot of people have signed up. I think we've got at least 75 or 80 people that have signed up for that. So we're looking forward to that. There's still some room. I think if people want to come, it's going to be $5 at the door. I would ask that you try to send in a note. There's an email to, I believe it's SB Tilby at 1952 at Gmail. And so she's just keeping a head count so that we know we have enough. We can have a maximum of 100 people, I believe. So if you haven't signed up yet, I think you can probably take your chances and come to the door. And I'm having a feeling we'll probably be able to let you in. So hopefully that'll be a fun night. That's the main thing.
Which night?
This coming Friday. So it starts at 6 o'clock, from 6 to 9 this Friday at the Country Club.
Cool.
Okay. So come and learn something about Southampton or share your knowledge about Southampton trivia, a little bit of history. Okay. Any other business that can't wait to the next meeting? And I'm going to say, a regular meeting, I guess, would be April 1st, but I think I would like to suggest, if everybody's available, that we have our joint meeting with FinCom probably on next Tuesday, on the 25th, because by then, we should be able to get more clarity, both on the school situation for both schools, but also on potential cuts that Scott is trying to work on, given that we've got various departments that may need to do a little more trimming down. So if we can do that, I'd appreciate that. And then I've got just one other thing. When we did, and Stephen, I hadn't told you this, we, I forgot, when we did the appointment for Stephen to be on the, as the alternate from select board to be on the PVPC, I did not put an end date on that, so the term on that.
For life.
No. Basically, it would be, I'm going to suggest for May 1st of 2026, which essentially is the time of, you know, another year out in terms of your term on the select board, I believe. Didn't you end up next year, maybe? I think, I think so. So I will, just to, if everybody's okay with that, I'll just modify that appointment to have Stephen be the select board alternate to the PVPC until May 1st, 2026. Okay? Any opposition? If not, I'll take that as an approval, and I'll let them know accordingly. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve, February 11 and February 18. Has anybody noticed anything there that they'd like to correct or change or something missing? They look pretty...
We do them together or...
Oh, I think we can unless anybody's noticed any errors. They look pretty simple to me. I didn't particularly pick up anything myself.
I didn't either.
So...
I'm going to accept both February 11th and February 18th minutes as presented.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Stephen. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. And then Stephen, we'll turn it over to you on the warrant approvals.
My favorite part. We have approved or pending approval, goodly, number of warrants, seven, seven maybe. W. 25-33 in the amount of $242,335.08. P. 25-34 in the amount of $371,856.46. P. D. 25-34, the amount is $63,453.01. P. D. 25-34A in the amount of $241,977.85. W., uh-oh, might be wrong. I'm going to go with W. 25-35 in the amount of $258,000.
Yep. Right, that's not W. 235, it's W. 25, correct.
W. 25-35 is what we just read out.
Yep.
Next one is P. 25-36, the amount is $355,038.08. Finally, P. D. 25-36, the amount is $59,142.81.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a couple of other old business items that maybe we haven't talked about. Scott, you mentioned the HMP update already, so we know about that, and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Do you want to give us any update on the railway sewer? Next steps on that, or what's happening status-wise on that one?
Stephen and I, we have a tie-in bond. Yesterday, we just need a debrief from that so far.
Okay.
And then the ADA door openers should be coming in soon. We've contacted the company, kept the taxes in status, did the debit card, placed the order, so we're just waiting for it to come.
Hopefully, they won't take forever. All right. Okay.
Our money?
Capital.
Capital money, capital. Yeah, yeah. Broadband committee charge, we are still at our own mercy on that one. We've got to sit down and figure out if we really want to be, select board to be the MLP, or how we want to proceed with that. And that's another huge project that we need to keep that on there until we get down to figuring that out. And same with capital asset planning. We've got to call a capital meeting soon. So that's going to happen probably in a couple of weeks' time as well, so. All right. So next select board meeting, we will have on the 25th, and then April 1st and 15th going forward as our usual schedule.
So I have a question on that. We, where'd I see it? Yeah, we're planning on meeting on April 1st. The caucus is in here from 7 to 9.
Oh, the caucus is here, yeah. No, no.
Is that going to be a very 30-minute meeting?
Yeah, that's going to be a challenge, isn't it? That's right. I forgot. That's a Tuesday night. Yeah, the caucus is April 1st, so we might not be able to. If we, well, if we meet the 25th next week and get business done, finance-wise, maybe, maybe we can avoid the 1st and go until, until the 9th or whenever that is, the next meeting.
With the next meeting, you've got tax day, April 15. I mean, you're just picking all the...
Yeah, I know. I know. They fall on the wrong days this year, don't they?
Someone who's scheduled a special town meeting on race day.
Yeah, I know, yeah. We're striking out. Yeah, I know, yeah, we're striking out on that one, aren't we? I know. Well, yeah, April 1st with the caucus, what did, what did...
I wrote down 7 to 9.
7 to 9 on that, so if anything, you know, we'd have a short 6 o'clock meeting, we'll have to decide if we, if we need that, I guess, when we get here, when we get to that point. So thanks for pointing that out, forgot about that.